Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. If you could please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'm now going to make a motion, uh, excuse me. I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of review, reviewing. Of course, my Wi-Fi went down. Thank you. Uh, where we at? Review, refer, for the purpose of viewing one legal matter with no action to follow and two personnel matters with no action follow. Do I have a second, Mr. Thorne? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We are now in executive session.
Welcome everybody. I'm gonna make a motion to reconvene from executive session. I have a second. Mr. Thorne, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. All right. Hello. Welcome to tonight's board meeting. We already did the pledge of allegiance. So we're gonna move into our moment of silence. So if you would join me in a moment of silence for the following people, that would be amazing. Katherine Balch, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Kevin Davis, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Alexander Ventrone III, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Mary Shear, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Yeah, of course.
The last person was a very close friend of mine, Mary Shear, dedicated teacher in the North Syracuse Central School District. She started in Romulus, New York, and then she came to North Syracuse and was a fourth grade teacher, beloved by so many students at Main Street. And then when Main Street was closed, her and I went to Bear Road, and she retired from Bear Road. She was a fourth grade teacher all the time. She loved fourth grade. She loved nine, 10-year-olds. And she was a dedicated teacher in this school district. So we will miss her.
Thank you for that, Mr. Crabtree. All right. First up for presentations, we have the cast and crew of Once Upon a Mattress who is visiting tonight with the director Danielle Rousa to make an announcement to the Board of Education.
Thank you. Oh. Hello, everybody. My name is Ethan, and I am here on behalf of the CNS musical team. We wanted to come here to tell you all about our the CNS musical team. We wanted to come here to tell you all about our upcoming production of Once Upon a Mattress, which is a wonderful, hilarious musical about the classic tale of the princess and the pea.
We have three shows. Our first show is March 21st at 7:00 PM. Our second show is March 22nd at 2:00 PM. And then the last and final show is also March 22nd at 7:00 PM. And we really hope that you guys come.
Couple other cast members here tonight, and we wanted to present each of the board members with some tickets. So you guys can come up now. We hope to see you all there.
All right. So next up, we have a proclamation. So I'll read this, then we can present some certificates. All right. Throughout our school building, school social workers have an impact on the district's students and families. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. The school's social workers of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. To honor the school's social workers of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Xavier Moody-Wusick, Vice President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude. Hereby declare March 18th, 2025, as School Social Worker Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Do I have a motion to accept that proclamation? Mr. Crabtree, one from Dr. Kramer. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
Hi, I'm Beth Robbins. I'm a social worker at the junior high school.
Hi, Heather Robillard, School Social Worker at CNS House Three.
Hi, Lee Rock Cool Yard, and I'm House Two at the high school.
All right. Next up, we have John Rice, who's the Director of Science. Will recognize students and teachers who participated in the Science Olympiad on January 25th at Lemoine College. He's gonna provide a historical overview of the New York State Science Olympiad competition and the success that the district has experienced throughout the years.
Before I turn it over to Mr. Minor and the students, I just will give a quick overview, as you mentioned. For the past 40 years and since the beginning in 1984, North Syracuse schools have been competing in the New York State Science Olympiad competitions. Many of you may know the district has a storied Science Olympiad history, including qualifying for the New York State event for 25 years in a row, from 1993 to 2018, which is quite a record in itself. I don't think we have a sports team that has done that. There are actually two divisions in Science Olympiad, a C Division or the High School Division, and a B Division, which represents grades six through nine. Each Science Olympiad team is limited to 15 students, but unlike sports teams, that may be heavy with upperclassmen and women starting usually at the varsity level. The Science Olympiad teams are limited to five ninth graders per B Division team and seven seniors in the C Division. A Science Olympiad competition typically includes two dozen events. You're gonna hear some of them when our students come up here to speak, and some of the events that they participated in and what they earned their medals in. They range from students getting tested in astronomy to an engineering event that calls for a student to design and build a trajectory device within specific parameters that is capable of launching a projectile a given distance with precision. This past Saturday, the district hosted the Midstate B Regional Competition, and our students placed fourth in the competition, earning them a spot in the New York State competition, which is held in East Syracuse during the first week of April. But we are here tonight to acknowledge the accomplishments of this year's CNS Science Olympiad team, in which 31 of the 38 students competing on three different teams earned medals, or earned at least one medal. You probably heard a lot of them jingling back there, so some of them have several medals. The advisors of this year's team are Mr. Minor, Marty Minor, and Matt Glaub. Mr. Minor has been a Science Olympiad coach for the past three decades, and he's gonna give you a little overview of the accomplishments of this year's CNS team.
All right. So 38 students this year was a lot of students to work with. A lot of them did a lot of the studying and preparation on their own. Usually, my room is filled with, you know, kids prepping for the building events or the engineering events. And so, but this year, again, they did well. Again, tough competition, but I'll let them introduce themselves and maybe share one of the events that they medaled in. Hey, why don't you guys stand up?
Oh, there you go. And a lot of the students couldn't make it tonight, so you can see the team on the screen, the entire team.
Zachary Hoffman, I placed third at Chemistry Lab.
I'm Nata Longa Faye. I'm the co-president, along with Maddie Fresh, who cannot be here tonight. I also participated in Chem Lab, and I placed ninth in Forensics this year.
Hi, I'm Bethany Brandt. I am the co-president, and I placed eighth in Material Science.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Rose, and I am the treasurer. I placed seventh, eighth, and ninth for a variety of different events.
I'm Jacob Straight, and I got second in Optics.
I'm Samudharjo, and I also got fifth in Optics, but I was on a different team than Jacob. Oh, yeah. So for Optics, it consisted of a test and construction portion. So the test basically consisted of material based on how light behaves, like in certain, in different materials, anatomy of the eye. And the construction portion was, you were given a box with certain dimensions, and you had to use mirrors to redirect your laser onto a randomized target point for, and the points based on that were based on how close you were to that target.
I also did Tower. And with Tower, you have a set dimension, a minimum dimension, to make a tower that is supposed to hold as much weight as it can while weighing as little as it can. And I ended up placing seventh in that.
One of the events that I competed in was called Bunge Drop, and is where I had to construct an elastic fabric to be able to stretch between three to five meters. And day of the competition, we were given the distance. So I had to make the fabric be able to choose the distance that it needed to stretch without hitting the floor.
For Material Science, there was three portions of the competition. There was a testing portion, a lab portion, and a prepared portion, where we had to create a concrete puck that we would, that would then be dropped from a certain height, and in order to make it not crack. For the test portion, I had to understand the composition and nature of materials such as glass and concrete.
So for this year, I did Forensics and Chem Lab, and they're generally both study events. For Forensics, you can take a cheat sheet with you to the competition, but it still requires a lot of studying. So for Forensics... Hello? For Forensics, I made that. And then Chem Lab, during the competition, we had to perform a titration. And then also for the test portion, you had to look at solubility rules.
Any questions or comments? I'd like to make one quick comment in recognition of Mr. Minor. I don't know if you heard Dr. Rice, he said for the better part of three decades has been doing this, and that is not an easy feat. That amount of time and effort that goes in just above, you know, your teaching duties is something that shouldn't be taken lightly. And I know I'm appreciative of it. I know our district is. I mean, I took one class with you, and I still, even though I don't weld, I haven't welded since your class, the lessons that I've, I learned and the hands-on experience that I got is so invaluable that I can't say thank you enough. So, no, from, we all say thank you. Next, we're going back to back with really cool stuff here. We have Jackie Hayman and Amy Highsick, who are gonna present on their attendance at the Gambia, which is an educational summit held during February break in Africa.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for indulging us and letting us tell you about the work that we did in the Gambia. Gambia is a really, really, really small country in Western Africa. It's surrounded on three sides by Senegal. Title, total population of the entire country is just over 3 million people. And at its widest point, it's only 31 miles wide from one side to the other, and a lot of that is river. So the country is not very old. They only gained their independence from Britain in 1965. So one of the things we're gonna tell you about is we got to go to their Independence Day celebration, their Diamond Independence Day. So whoever's got the, oh, I have the clicker. Okay. So part of the reason that we went and the work that we did is through the NAMI Foundation. The NAMI Foundation is named for the grandmother of Al Hassan Suso. Al Hassan Suso was the 2019 New York State Teacher of the Year, and his wife Bintu, both of whom are Gambian immigrants. They hold dual citizenship in the US and in Gambia. Al Hassan is a social studies teacher at the International Community High School in the Bronx that is in completely 100% immigrant population, all newcomers to the country. And so the foundation's mission, after all of the recognition that he got as Teacher of the Year, and also the NEA Member Benefits Award, and all sorts of awards, and he's a Global Teacher Prize finalist as well, he decided, he and his wife decided, we need to go back and we need to do something to help teachers and uplift teaching in the Gambia. So that really was where the foundation was born. It's a nonprofit organization that they founded. It really is to uplift teachers and the teaching profession, to help with recruitment and retention, to build schools in communities that don't have adequate schooling, and to provide professional development to be able to help educators. The delegation that we had was made up of 11, so I was also on the trip last year. Last year was the very first time that they did this, and we had a group of 28, which was large and slightly unmanageable. 11 was a little bit better manageable group, but we were administrators and medical professionals. We had a doctor and a medical professional there as well, and those who just wanted to be there and support the work of uplifting the teachers in the Gambia. So the picture on the left is all of our group in front of the Department of Edu-, oh, I know, that's outside the White House, but with Department of Education officials. And the picture on the right, we actually got time, like FaceTime and a conversation time with the Vice President of the Gambia as well.
Um, Hassan. I told it. Okay. Good. Thanks. So what I found fascinating about this experience, it was like pedal to the metal. We arrived, we're on like two hours of sleep, and we hit the ground running. And our first day, we started off at a teacher college, engaged in conversation around some problems that I found oddly and remarkably similar to the problems that we face with public education here in the United States. What I found so fascinating is that their problems are just intensely more magnified. But here, when we were talking to people preparing to become teachers, talking about poverty, community involvement, child attendance, all the same issues that we see here that we are battling with our own schools. So the conversations were rich and engaging, and also, like, kids are kids everywhere. We visited a couple different classrooms in this teacher college. One of them was this music classroom where, I don't know if you can see, there is a teacher holding, like, she's got her child on the front desk. So, and this is, I'm gonna reference this picture later, but part of the work that we did as part of our, like, humanitarian efforts was to try to keep women in school and girls in school. And so part, you're, I'll get to it later, but just remember that picture.
This is still all in the same day, running on two hours of sleep. So, you know, you may think that this is all the way on the other side of the world, but there is a kind of hometown connection, if you will. So the, there's a Starfish, it's called the Starfish International, that was started by the woman in the, in the bottom picture with the white dress kind of in the middle. Her name is Yassin Starr. She went to Syracuse University, and she and her husband live in Brewherton. I didn't find that out until after I got home from the Gambia last year, and I read a news article that Al Hassan had posted in our, you know, group chat. And I went, wait, Syracuse University? And I kept reading, and I'm like, wait, Brewherton? And I emailed her immediately, and I was like, howdy, neighbor. How did we not figure this out when I was over there? But we, the last time that she was home, last spring, I had dinner with her and her family, and, you know, they're lovely. But there's our hometown connection. So she is from Gambia, but she did do her master's work at Syracuse University and has a house in Brewherton. And she has two beautiful children, but she did sort of the same thing and said that this initiative, really at Starfish, is one that is, the philosophy that they have is one of abundance, not deficit. It is, let's use the, the tools that we have, the strength that we have, the people we have, the resources that we have, and build our own communities from within, and keep all of those resources to be able to help others in our community. And so it just is a, it's a wonderful initiative, but it really is that mindset of, it isn't deficit. It's, it is, it is, let's, let's take what we have and let's build it bigger. Their facilities are amazing. This was really started as a girls' program to help be able to give girls and young women marketable skills so that they could help support their families, have a source of income when that is not something that is necessarily encouraged. So it just is, it's a phenomenal resource in their community.
So one of the things I thought super cool was that, and kind of Amy touched upon this, but this whole, the entire time I was traveling and going to schools and meeting people, I was in awe of the extreme poverty, but also the amount of positivity and rise above attitude that came from every child we met, every teacher we met, every doctor we met. It was just, and you kind of see a couple of these pictures that were all over. This was a converted, like, shipping container they made into a library. They're resourceful. They reuse so many things. It's so impressive. And just to kind of piggyback on what Amy said about Yassin Starr was that she remembers being a child when she, she told the story of her mother and her father got into a pretty bad fight, and ended, she ended up getting kicked out of the house in the middle of the night, and she was kind of walking up and down the street with her mom, looking for a place to stay at night. And for her, it was really important that when she returned to the Gambia- And for her, it was really important that when she returned to the Gambia, that she gives girls a marketable skill upon graduation so they are not dependent upon a man to help sustain their family. And so everything that she does in this Starfish Academy, and this is part of the farm that she had just made happen. Her, the story is absolutely incredible about the fundraising that she did for this, but is, it funds itself, like the farm funds itself, the work, the kids sell the produce. And there's this, it keeps rolling forward. So it's really, really amazing. And it's, she just talked about accepting boys this past year and teaching young men how, what appropriate gender roles are and how to treat each other with dignity and respect. And that was also like just beautiful to see. She said that at one point, they had like a meal that she made all the boys sort of prepare. And what is it like to prepare a meal? And there's very traditional roles in the Gambia. So this was the most incredible day, and we do have a video. I don't know if it will play or not, but this was the Charles Zhao Memorial Secondary School. So this was the equivalent of like seventh through 12th grade. And this is the entire school outside. You can kind of see the auditorium and I'll flip through some of the photos. But the kids, I felt like I was a rock star. I felt like I was, I was like, I'm just a teacher from upstate New York. But, you know, they were so excited to see us and so thrilled to have us there and show us around. So you can see, this is some typical classroom photos. You're going to see there are no whiteboards, there are no smartboards, there are no computers, there are, there's chalk. And they talk about teachers with chalk in their pants. The teachers have to purchase their own chalk. Oh, sorry, let me go back one. So here are some kids working. They're balancing equations, balance electrons for our science folks, copying out of books that are old, old. And this is during their lunch. I also found it fascinating. They are, their campus is wide open. There was no rules about where kids sit for lunch or how to behave. There's a lot of expectations around responsibilities. And it is a really, it was super insightful to see that kids really can come and go. It was, I mean, the kids just wanted to take, it just felt like I, this is where I felt the best, the entire trip at this day. So I'll let you talk a little bit about the public schools.
So the, and a lot of the public schools are really like that, very underfunded. The government does fund them, but the checks are always late. That was a, that was a big bone of contention. So the chalk conversation was, yeah, we can't buy chalk because the government hasn't actually provided the money for us to be able to do this. So we have to go find it. But it's also difficult to find supplies and locate supplies. There are things that you cannot get in country or they are prohibitively expensive. One of the, or two of the people that were on the trip with us were a doctor and his wife, who was a medical professional. And so they visited a hospital while we were at Starfish and, or while we were doing professional development. And then we got to actually accompany them to go see a public health center, which that's what, you know, this is, that's the inpatient hospital. There are six beds. The picture on the top right, that's their NICU. One. That wasn't working. They do have a, what was it? No, it was an X-ray machine. No, it was, it was, no, there was, there is a CT. There's one CT scanner in the entire country. It's only available in Benjul and only if the technician is there that day. They have medical supplies that have been donated, and Glenn was telling us this, the doctor was telling us this, that they have medical, you know, equipment that has been donated by other countries and other places. But the instruction manual, one was in Dutch and one was in Spanish. And no one there speaks those, so they can't get them translated. So they have equipment that they can't use because they don't have access to it, right? But it was, so this was the real reason that we were there. And this was the whole initiative that Al Hassan and his wife really came up with. They modeled it after the Global Teacher Prize Ceremony, but they really created a Gambia Teacher Prize Ceremony. And so they had a regional winner from each region, each school region in the country that came together for this big prize event. Each teacher was given a $50,000 Delosse prize money, right? That is a year's salary in, as, you know, in the Gambia. Do you want to know what that is US? Less than $750. Okay, so just to give you an idea of the poverty level. And so that was a, that was a huge gift that they were given, a year's salary and professional development and a free college program. That was the more, you know, that was worth its weight in gold. The young woman who's pictured at the bottom left is the overall winner. So out of the eight finalists, regional finalists that were there, she was the overall sort of national winner. She was given an additional $100,000 Delosse prize. So she was given the equivalent of three years' salary and lots of professional development. There were lots of videos and pictures and things of the hero's welcome that all of the regional winners received when they returned home to their schools. And Angelique had the fire trucks and the police sirens and her entire school staff and all of the students were lined up against both sides of the road as she came down to welcome her home. So it was just, it was wonderful and moving, and it was very phenomenal that they chose a female teacher as the overall winner. Because that is also something, the gender roles are very, very traditional. And so to uplift a female teacher in that space is incredible. It really was incredible. Got to spend lots of time with the regional winners. I'm connected with a bunch of them. I still get messages from them, even though that we don't sometimes remember that there's a time difference. I'll wake up and there are messages that they would have sent me overnight. Hi, good morning. How are you? I miss you. When are you coming back? Right? So.
So one of our days also involved celebrating the inauguration. I say that every time, Independence Day celebration. I do say, I don't know why, every time. What we found out this year is Bintu, who is part of this NAMI Foundation, her grandfather was the president, first president of the country. And they were sort of exiled when the presidency changed hands and their lives were threatened, and thus how she became an American citizen. So she was, when, so the second president was like a dictator and he just was cruel and corrupt. And you can see the infrastructure in the country is bare bones. And so when she returned, when this new president came back, like there was a new president that was elected within the last five years. She had like delegation status, like huge status. So we were able to go to this Independence Day celebration and meet the woman that Amy and I are standing with is like the Department of Education Minister. She just retired.
After 40 years.
So we were afforded a lot of safety and a lot of opportunities to meet wonderful people because of Bintu. And she definitely didn't share that information. She was super modest about it.
She keeps it pretty close to that.
Yeah.
You know, borderline royalty if there is, you know, even though there isn't such a thing. We had seats at tables and eyes like this one.
Yeah. So we were on the national news. This was broadcasted. And as we met the Vice President of the country, he was a teacher himself and is a very big proponent of education. We talked about the value of lifting up the floor and what it means for everybody in education. Is there anything you want to add? Okay, so this is where a lot of my, and Ryan, I can talk to this, a lot of the humanitarian work, I felt like was my calling and why I was excited to go. We donated a bunch of things. First and foremost, at the teacher college, we donated reusable feminine hygiene products because when people get their periods in the Gambia, they don't go to school. They have no way to take care of themselves in a manner that's suitable with teaching. So.
And that includes teachers.
Yeah.
Teachers do not have access to supply to be able to go to school.
So just being able to provide a consistent education for people that menstruate. And the other thing we donated is the union was very gracious with us and they gave us two laptops that we donated to Starfish. And we're undergoing some work on how to set up a virtual exchange. Now, there's a lot of work behind making sure the kids are safe on both ends. So I have some work to do on my part, but people are so grateful for everything. It's really super, you just, it feels so good. I just don't even explain it.
So this was actually from last year. And one of the things that we, so when I was there last year, the union had sent me with $250 US to be converted to local currency to be able to purchase bicycles, because that's one of the, was one of the identified needs. So the money that we had was able to purchase five bicycles and they were given to the young woman on the right in that top right picture, who was one of the regional finalists from last year. It's basically in Senegal. And her students have a five mile, one-way walk to school every day. So the kids are walking up to two hours one way to go to school. And so she was the one who was given the bicycles because she was in the greatest need. The picture that's on the left is really cool because the young woman on the very left of that picture and her mother showed up to school that day to sign paperwork to drop her daughter out of school because it was too far to walk. And instead, she got a bicycle and she stayed in school because we provided that for her. So that's part of the work that we are, we are doing as a faculty, as a school, as a community to be able to impact lives on the other side of the world. Is there, yes.
So, yeah, so this year, the Human Rights Club and the raffled off this gift basket. And with the earnings, I matched what the kids sent and the union sent us with $500. And collectively, we donated $800. And with the money, this is so cool. The NAMI Foundation donated the $800 to the local university and they are setting up the North Syracuse Teacher and Student Childcare Facility. So women that are attending the school can drop off their children and get their degree and continue to teach. So we do have a namesake after us in the Gambia and I hope we can continue this work as we move forward. I don't know, I saw some faces that were at the Festival of Nations. It's, some of these are our students. And for them to be recognized and honored and noticed from where they come from. And it just gives real perspective. When you see people struggling and rising above the struggle and understanding that learning is difficult. Learning requires struggle and learning requires difficult times. And how do we get through the growth of learning with grace and resiliency? And I saw that in the Gambia and I see that with my students. And I hope I can continue to share that with my students moving forward, setting up continual virtual exchange. And this was just such an amazing opportunity. And thank you for listening to us and hearing about our experience.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait. No, it's not that simple.
Questions?
Well, I don't even know if I should talk because it's not really, I'll go on and you probably want to set a three-minute timer. No, I appreciate you more than you could know for sharing this. I did something similar 20 years ago in central Mexico, so it changes your life when you come back. And with the advantage you have, I think, you said you have a virtual connection, so you can keep it. It's really hard to keep going when you come back a couple thousand miles and remove. But you mentioned the government does support education, but the checks are late. I just wondered about that because where I was, they gave them land in the state of Guanajuato, but they got land.
Yeah.
And then they actually saw, they held classrooms outdoors until the community with the students built school buildings.
Yeah.
So it made me come back here and realize how everything is so taken for granted. And it was hard really to adjust when you come into a class of eighth graders like, you know, you got a pencil, you should be, you know, thankful. So it is, it is life changing. I hope you can relay that to the students. But you mentioned they had a state education department or Department of Education, which as last I knew we had, but I'm not sure if we do now, which I wish was funny. But can you just tell me how the kind of support?
So I'll just start.
And one other little short question after that.
Yeah, so I will say, the government itself is corrupt. There's a lot of corruption and the new president is trying to build infrastructure to support all those things. But there, there's a lot of broken pieces in the Gambia. And as a result, the Vice President does really support education.
But he's, yeah, being able, like he is not able or is free to be able to do some of those things because of the government power structure, right? So while he would like to do things, so they are state-run schools. Students don't have to pay, they do have to buy uniforms, but they don't have to pay to attend school for public schools. But Bintu also said too, that anybody who is of means, you send your kids to private schools because the private schools are the better ones and the public schools are not. But that was, that was why it was so meaningful when we talked to the Vice President and he said, no, I sent my kids to public schools. Because I believe in public schools, that I taught in a public school, I sent my kids to public school, even though everybody else, you know, the elite and everybody else sends their kids to private schools. He said, no, my kids go to public.
I just wondered if you noticed an unbelievable enthusiasm and appreciation amongst the students to be able to be there and learn.
Yes. Oh, my gosh. Amazing.
Because they, okay, I just, you see that, it's hard to process when you come back here. And this country is wonderful, don't get me wrong, but we take so much for granted, the standard of living we have that is just there.
Yeah. Yeah, there is a real like, and we did ask about discipline and there's a clear like, yeah, keep yourself in check. Like, what do you do when there's, when you have discipline problems? We asked the principal at Charles Zhao and he's like, well, we usually, you know, have a meeting with a child and if that doesn't help them, we'll call the parent in. And that was like the end of it. I was like, oh. Oh, yeah, okay, great.
You just don't have the discipline.
Yeah.
But they also have a very strict code of conduct that all the student body agrees to. They have a head boy and a head girl and, you know, they are also responsible for helping to maintain.
I did witness a teacher run a child out of the classroom. With maybe something in their hand.
So if anybody else, I'd like to go. So I'll start off with a quick comment. I just wanted to say thank you so much. I mean, you're not, you're not only representing, you know, your schools and the district, but our community, you know, New York as a whole, going over there and doing such great humanitarian work that's not an easy feat. And I can't thank you enough for that. And I hope you guys take pride in that as well, because it's something to be proud of. But my question, and I have a million, so I will be contacting you offline. I was racking my brain how to formulate one question or two questions from this. But the only thing I could really come up with is, could you speak to either your personal or professional life coming back? How does, how do you see this affecting you, like say in the classroom or say when you have to handle discipline or?
Today. I have a, literally have an example from today. On the way to work this morning, I checked my email at a red light and I had left turn a bad decision island, first of all. But so I have an email from a student that I haven't seen in quite some time. She's been absent a lot and she's a straight A student. And her email starts off almost like an apology to me. Sorry, I've been missing class. I know I've come in late and it, and that's troublesome. And she kind of goes on to explain how I addressed her for being late and that it created a vibe for her and she doesn't feel comfortable coming back to class. And she has, like, it's difficult to get to school on time. There's multiple things going on. And that she hopes she can see me soon. Signed, the student. So I'm reading it and I'm like, pretty sure she comes in with Dunkin' Donuts every morning, but I'm gonna just keep that in my pocket. I'm not gonna address that. You know what? I decide, I'm not gonna respond to her at all. I'm gonna just send her a quick note that says, thanks for the email. Let's touch base when you get back. I expected to see her today. She didn't come in. And I thought to myself, like, the expectation to arrive to school on time and that it, like, we provide busing. I know the buses get here on time. If she's having trouble getting to school because she, I know she I I know the buses get here on time. If she's having trouble getting to school because she I know she has her own car. Um. If something's going on with the car or whatever, she could take the bus. I know she definitely rolls up with a pink Dunkin' Donuts drink every morning when she is late. Like. This sort of expectation that it was um my fault that. She was late and I created a vibe. Now, I I know some of you guys know me, um and some of you guys don't know me as a teacher, but for the most part, I'm pretty laid back. And I'm pretty easygoing and I have a really good sense of humor with the students and, you know. I don't take things personally. I don't take things too seriously. Um and I'll definitely have a nice conversation with the student and welcome her back into my room and apologize for any wrong vibe, but in my head I was thinking. Man, like the students I just witnessed, it would never be the teacher's fault. For why the student didn't show up. Right? And here we are. They have acts. I like part of me was thinking like, well, catch the bus if you can't make it here on time. Uh I'll have a conversation and I will talk to her a little bit about my experience and the value of education. But it did kind of send me a little bit on my heels this morning, like. We are providing a free education with free transportation and. Free breakfast and free lunch and you're showing up late with a coffee drink in hand. And it's somehow my fault and I was a little. Little rocked by that this morning. So, yeah. Does that answer your question?
No, it does. It does. It it helps put things in perspective and you you learn things over there and you learn perspectives over there and you learn. Other point of views over there and then you come back here and it's 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 totally different and kids these days grow up differently, you know, he here specifically than ten years ago when I was in school, you know, so and. Ten years ago, here is 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 way different there, you know. Um so I really do appreciate that perspective and and.
I will say, I don't want to leave on a bad note about our students because. Azariah is the president of the Human Rights Club. And this club on Mondays we meet, please come any Monday, two fifty at the high school, we meet. This group of kids. Particularly you are some of the most uplifting, powerful. Fulfilling group of students and anytime I get rocked at work or I feel bad about something and I have club. Everything else is better and it's because we have wonderful students that are dedicated to their education and dedicated to this community and lifting the community up. So. I'm grateful for you and I don't want to poo poo our students, but.
Thank you so much. Great shoes, by the way. So next we have our third cool update in a row. We have a budget update from Mr. Keegan.
Well, good evening. Once again, I have the unenviable position of following very inspiring and. Amazing presentation, so let me apologize in advance for my presentation. Um. Tonight I'm gonna I'm gonna cover many of the same topics we've talked about um over the last few weeks, uh certainly from the initial budget with a few updates. Uh. So I I sprinkled in a few pictures to keep us all grounded and make sure we remember what this process is all about, um our kids and their success. Obviously, our strategic plan is anchored in, I'm sorry, our business, our um uh annual budget is anchored in our strategic plan. And those three primary goals of graduation rate, reading proficiency and emotional competency. Uh drive a lot of our thought processes as we go through the planning process. We do not. We're very excited about Micron, but we don't have to do not have to worry about Micron as it relates to the twenty five, twenty six budget. They have not um wrapped up their pilot agreement and so that will be something we'll deal with in the future. Uh but we continue to work with Micron on various uh projects and investments that they're making in school districts in central New York and we're. We're fortunate to have that experience and our kids have that experience. We talked last time and I'll just mention it again. Uh this week we'll get an updated inflation number, but the trend isn't good. Uh it looks like uh we might even see an uptake uptick in February when the numbers come out this week. We have factored into the numbers you're gonna see, uh any recently negotiated union contracts. And um the impact of of uh federal stimulus has been pretty significant. Uh in prior years, but we haven't had that money this year and I'll talk more about that in a moment. Uh here's the inflation data that we uh we looked at last time and again, I'll update this uh this week when I receive uh additional information through February. Foundation aid, um just just so that we don't forget, this is the largest component of our state aid. And um I think folks intentions are good, taking a look at the formula. I just want to remind people that. Uh since two thousand and seven, when this formula was put in place, the North Syracuse Central School District. Um has received a hundred ninety two million dollars less than the formula specified. Um and now they're changing the formula. I think the changes they're making uh this year are good, uh updating the poverty and census information. Um but it leaves us with a two percent increase in foundation aid, uh which certainly is not enough, given uh the inflationary environment that we're operating in. Another picture of one of our students. So on the on the uh on the revenue side, um not many changes uh since you last looked at this. I will talk about the tax levy where I've updated that. Uh with the numbers that we filed with the Comptroller's Office uh this week, uh but we still have a six point eight million dollar deficit. Um and you can see that our revenues are going up about nine point three million um in total. So on the on the tax uh levy, uh we go through this mandated calculation, the tax cap calculation and um. This this uh since I last met with you, we were able to to obtain some updated pilot information. I can't guarantee that this is the final pilot information, but it made a slight modification. We're a little over three percent. We're now at two point nine one percent. And as of March first, I had to file this with the Comptroller's Office and I've done that. Um I don't anticipate a significant increase or change. Um in the tax levy uh between now and the time we finalize the budget. I did get an updated health benefits projection from our um our consultants. And I was, uh it was really nice. Uh Dr. Ward uh took the time to to meet with our consultants to learn about our uh self insured plan. And um and we're still holding at four percent, which is wonderful. Uh so that's that's. One of the the better pieces of news in our budget process. Uh retirement costs, I I say this often. I just want to give it a another plug. We're lucky to operate in New York State where we have fully funded pension. Plans that are very well managed by the TRS and ERS, um so that while we. Put money aside every year for our teachers' retirement, when they retire, we're not making contributions toward their retirement after they retire and. And that's fiscally very sound, um and it takes a lot of pressure off of our off of our budgets. Energy costs, I I just want to mention, if if you didn't notice, we had a pretty tough winter this winter. So um we did lock in our energy costs, but that locked in the cost. Uh per kilowatt and per per therm um of of both electric and natural gas, but we are subject to usage trends. Um and so uh we'll be watching that closely, um because that does impact our budget. On the expenditure side. We uh fine tuned our benefits number. You can see we're getting closer to that four percent. We're four point four five percent increase. Um I just want to point out to people again, you see the large increase in debt service. That's kind of our mortgage payment for all of our capital projects that we're doing. And then uh just uh looking at our our BOSI's expenses, um they're up, uh they continue to grow and um it's because we take advantage of. So many different BOSI's programs, uh many of which are highly aidable and so we'll get BOSI's uh aid um in the. Year subsequent to when we spend the money and that's shown in our revenues as revenue from BOSI's. Uh but we're looking at about a seven and a half percent, seven point six percent increase in expenditures, which is more than our revenue increase. More pictures of the kids uh with one of our SROs. And um. So now we gotta talk a little bit about strategies for managing this six point eight million dollar deficit. This is an iterative process. Um you know, we're 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 peeling the the onion back one layer at a time and looking for opportunities, but you know, remember what our goal is. Our goal is to preserve the quality of educational programs. Here at North Syracuse, educational and and co curricular and athletic opportunities uh for for our kids as well as um. Looking out for the interests of our of our well trained staff. Um so a couple of things that come to mind uh that are kind of at the top of the list. We received a lot of money in connection with um COVID. That was the ARP and Cursa funding and as the board will remember, that funding ended September of twenty four. We left a number of things in our budget uh for the twenty four, twenty five school year, the year we're in right now. And we did that for two reasons. One is we still have academic deficits and social emotional um needs for our kids that we were trying to address. And secondarily, uh we actually thought uh we would get more foundation aid than we did. Um unfortunately, now that we know we're only getting a two percent increase in foundation aid, we just can't sustain the level of spending. Around the items that we added to our budget uh during uh COVID. So we're taking a really close look at all of those items and looking to trim wherever we can. Data also indicates, you know, again, I've said this time and time again, the single most important thing we do here as a district. Um is put an adult in front of a child so they can learn. And so when we talk about adding resources, we try to add adults in front of children, instructional staffing uh primarily. And so periodically we take a look at our staffing levels versus other districts in the area and our staffing levels are a little high and so. What we'd like to do is use attrition, retirements at open positions to reduce the size and cost of our instructional staff. Um and we're gonna be having a lot of conversations about this um and and working on this over the coming months before we uh finalize our budget. We're also looking at all of our support departments um and looking at ways we can reduce costs there again. Uh including eliminating positions where possible, particularly those that are open or uh you know, became open due to retirement. And then uh you know, finally, uh we're working to identify any other opportunities and creating, you know, that we can um do to cut our costs. Uh while creating a fiscally responsible budget that ensures that North Syracuse uh Central School District is in good financial standing. Um so a lot more, a lot more to come um over the coming weeks, uh but those are some of the areas that we're diving into, um looking for opportunities to close that budget deficit. I was able to uh update the information on our school buses. I shared with you uh before uh some of the things we're doing uh to modify our fleet just a little bit. Um we're gonna continue to buy two special needs or planning to buy two special needs buses. Um and we're gonna uh instead of buying ten sixty five passenger buses. Um we're gonna we're gonna buy eight sixty five passenger buses, the traditional uh layout and we're gonna uh buy two of the buses to have larger gasoline tanks. And some cargo storage bays underneath. And what that's gonna do for us, it'll save us um. Some wear and tear on our kids as we take trips on athletic and co curricular trips. Um and it'll it'll save those organizations and our district money if we have to uh rent or charter vehicles to make those trips happen. Keep in mind that our transportation aid rate is about seventy five percent. So um when we buy buses, um we. Uh they're highly aidable and so um it's very prudent for us to keep our fleet. Reasonably current and when I say reasonably current, we don't want to have too many buses that are ten years old. Or older, um because uh they have more repairs and maintenance costs and they're less reliable. Um the tax impact of what we've proposed here would be about a point one five percent or two dollars and sixty five cents for a home with a true value of. Hundred thousand dollars. So more to come on that. We'll fine tune that as we get closer to finalizing the budget, but that's that's what we're thinking about right now in terms of. Our vehicle bonding proposition. Uh at this stage of the game, we're not in a position to project uh an increase to our fund balance. This was the fund balance at the end of last year and uh. We anticipate that um there will be an update to this as we get closer to year end, uh but. We're working with a projected unassigned fund balance of about ten million dollars. Reserves, uh we've, I want to remind everybody that we subsidize the twenty four, twenty five budget by using a million dollars of our general liability reserve this year. Uh so that's why you're seeing that go from a million to thirty four thousand dollars. Um and we've also used um other reserves and uh uh debt service fund. In order to subsidize capital projects that the voters have approved. Library proposition will appear on the ballot here in uh and in the uh district office uh for the Salina Library. And we will also be having a uh another proposition on the ballot in May around our aquatics facility. Uh we've really struggled with uh the budget uh for the pool. For those of you who've followed along from home, we had to bid the project three times in order to get numbers that were reasonable. And we are, uh we're finally in a position where the board can accept uh bids for the pool construction. Um and uh but we're, since the budget, original budget sixteen nine was not enough. Al Sterbe secured an additional three million dollars worth of funding for us and in order to tap into that three million dollars worth of funding, we need uh the voters to approve. A uh uh that that spending or that expansion of the budget and so um that'll be on the ballot in May as well. And here is uh the groundbreaking actually for the pool. You can see our. Board President Mike Marizio and Al Sterbe and our our men's and women's swim coaches there. Vote and election, May Tuesday, May twentieth. Um and uh. You can see we've got a a couple of big meetings um happening here on March twenty fourth, fourth and April twenty first. Um as we try to uh come back to the board with recommendations for how to close that budget deficit. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Board of Education Committee reports. No, where are we? Oh, sorry. Uh we we have one speaker for community speakers tonight. I believe it's Mr. Krill. I apologize, Mr. Krill.
So bear with me. Um it seems as though a virus and bacteria have found me like most of our school system lately. Um so. I am here to speak to you. Um good evening, Dr. Ward, Xavier and board members. Uh thank you for the opportunity to speak to everyone. Um it's been some time since I've spoken publicly about internal matters. Uh we've enjoyed a good amount of time where we've been able to come and very much what we've seen earlier, a lot of positive interaction. Um this is a serious issue that may have a lasting detrimental impact on our system. Uh please listen carefully to the message that's being delivered. Requested the opportunity to speak with you all this evening as I and so many of my members. Are appalled by the district's response to Article five point ten of our our teacher contract agreement. In short. You don't get to arbitrarily and complicitously decide which portions of the contract you wish to administer. Student safety is the work of all district employees. At every turn, at every moment and every opportunity, we strive to create and lead safe safe classrooms. Thankfully, so many of our classrooms across the district are incredibly safe. There are several locations where instances quickly arise that that become safety concerns. Teaching, it's really hard work. Even more so since the pandemic. The growing number of students who cannot manage their behaviors from preschool through high schools, well documented specifically through the Workplace Violence and Protection Act. Restorative action reports that we receive from county districts across our buildings across our district and discipline referrals. It would be easy to assume that this is a largely special education matter and it is not. Teachers make on average well over fifteen hundred decisions a day, including decisions that are made to maintain the safety of all the students in our charge. Decisions making, decision making fatigue is real and teachers need to know that we can rely on our colleagues, principals and superintendent. When things get tough. And denying our member access to their contractual right, you've sent a clear message to all those employed in our instructional and support service realm. You do not have our back when things get rough. It's a terrible precedent and one that sent a wave of shock, anger and distrust through the system. At a time when we should rely on one another and depend upon the support as defined in the bargaining agreement. You've turned your back on us, ultimately abandoning us. This is beyond disappointing. I assure you, all is not lost. You still have the ability to do the right thing, showing us through word and action that you absolutely have our backs. I did not come here lightly. I understand the ramifications of what this is. We have a new superintendent. I have lots of optimism that we we as a system can actually. of a contract is adhered to, that we truly listen and understand and recognize that this is not a perfect system. And that goes both ways here. And we expect more from our leaders. I thank you for your time.
And as always, we always encourage community speakers. Now moving on to Board of Education Committee reports, starting off with Mr. Mark Thorne.
We will have a policy committee meeting tomorrow night at 5 o'clock here at the district offices.
Thank you. And Mr. Crabtree, did you want to do legislative and then slide into BOSI's?
Our recent legislative committee meeting was the past Wednesday and thanks to Mr. Keegan going over the preliminary budget. And I say to these teachers that are leaving that there's a lot you can do to help this budget situation, okay? If Paul, Matt and Josh would like to say anything about our meeting, about the budget or about the district situation.
No, I mean, I'll just echo what you said. I think we need to just keep, you know, the more people that can write to legislators. I know they've seen our faces, not if they've seen Dr. Ward's face, Don's, and we can keep getting in front of them. We just need people to write, write or make phone calls and leave messages is what I've been told works and what's needed now. So I would just add that. Thank you.
Anything, Josh?
Yeah, if I could add briefly, and I'll talk about some other things later, but the one thing I want to bring up is, you know, when talking about this budget, New York is supposed to be one of the school district, or one of the states that is leading the charge on education right now. And seeing what we saw that Don presented to us today is really unacceptable from the state government. And I hope that everyone on the board and as well as the people at home will really consider, you know, taking action and trying to talk to legislators, talk to the governor. You know, it's a tight budget, but we're, we're doing really a lot of wrong for our kids if we go down this track and it's not fair to all the kids that we just saw in here, the kids that could be sitting there two or three years from now. But if we don't have the accurate funding, they won't be able to do some of these programs that we're seeing every single time when we have these great presentations.
On Friday, a group of us from the committee went to visit with Chris Ryan, our new senator who, from the 50th district. Ezraiah, thank you for going because I think it makes a difference when students go. But my thing is to go right with Paul, what Paul said, we're looking at a huge deficit in this school district and we aren't going to get any more money. It, it looks like Al Sterbe and Chris Ryan, we're not going to get any more foundation. This board has very difficult decisions coming up. And as Don said, we only have three meetings. We have another March meeting. We have an April meeting and then the next April meeting, we have to finalize a budget for this community. So any help anybody out there can give, we would appreciate it. Any suggestions? I'm just very worried this year, very worried personally. Thank you.
And I would just like to add, kudos to Ezraiah for, I believe Senator Ryan said that you were going to be the next CFO and that he was going to end up working for you. So she was very impressive at the meeting.
Thank you all. Do we have anything for BOSI's? Yeah, that's what I figured. All right. Moving on to Board of Education comments, Mr. Luddin.
Yeah, I, I wanted to talk briefly about the, the NICE-Disconnected Conference that I had the pleasure to attend as well as Paul. And I got to sit with Jackie and we had quite the great conversation and I got to sit with Phil as well. And I think that one, one of the things that those of you that are not familiar may not know is that the governor is proposing a bell-to-bell ban on cell phones in the classroom. And for a lot of the parents out there that have concerns, I think it really is important to go and look at some of the information that's being presented in the ways in which one, cell phones in classrooms are really harming our kids. And two, that if there are emergency situations, that children having cell phones and access to cell phones in emergency situations can actually harm the situation and make it harder for first responders to do what their job is. And I, I bring it up because it's very likely a reality that this is going to happen. You know, we heard from some folks at our last legislative committee meeting that this is very likely going to be passed this year. And I think it's important that all of the people, all the stakeholders in our district really understand what this is about and it's protecting our kids. It's protecting all of our staff and our community when they're in schools. So I encourage you to really look into this and, and I, I think, you know, John was one of the people that was kind of putting it on as well as Chris Colabello at NICE. And I appreciate that you put this conference on and that I was able to attend because something that did not seem to make a whole lot of sense at first really does have a lot of positive benefits once you talk about it. And I think it's important that we're doing that, having those types of dialogues here.
Thank you, Josh. Anybody else? We're going to move on to superintendent's comments. Dr. Ward.
Thank you. As you know, this time of year, sorry, I put my glasses on. As you know, this time of year, there, there are many seasons, successful seasons coming to a close. And I just wanted to highlight some of the sports pieces that have happened over the last few weeks. So first of all, boys swimming and diving this past weekend, congratulations to Carter Kastrandra, Nate Ornasky on their outstanding achievements at the New York State High School Diving Championships, Editha College placing ninth and 11th with impressive scores of 442.90 and 438.0 respectively. Great season for the girls. I was happened to be in attendance on, on Sunday and it went back and forth with Liverpool, but unfortunately we fell short, losing to Liverpool 51 to 45. But after finishing 17 and five this season for our girls' basketball, I just think that that was, that was a wonderful season. For cheerleading, competed in New York State Championships this past weekend and they finished sixth. For track, Cameron Ingram is the New York State Champion at the 55 meter hurdles with a time of 7.20. He also finished third in the 55 meter dash. Anna Ellis is a New York State Champion in triple jump with a distance of 39 feet 10 inches. Anna followed her triple jump win with a third place in the high jump. The four by two relay, Stephanie Todd, Grace Murray, Lea McDonald and Jaden Mackey takes fourth at the New York State Championship for Division One. Congratulations to Sophia Graham, who, who Pete Red placed sixth in the 600 meter New York State meet with a time of 1 minute and 35 seconds. Also in the Section Three Interscholaxis relay, we took fifth place at the New York State Championship with Grace Murray running the 200 meter leg and Evelyn McClenty running the 600 meter leg. And also our four by eight team, Katie Harbaugh, Cam Sizik, Gabby Putnam and Sophia Graham takes fourth place at the New York State Championship meet. Jaden Mackey finished 12th in the 55 meter hurdles. Haley Budnarsky, Alex Bellnap, Gina Malphy, Evelyn McClenty were 13th in the division in the four by 400 relay. Anthony Johnson was a medal, medal contender in the boys' triple jump and finished 27th. ENS also had the boys' four by 800 quartet of Tyler Graham, Dominic Petra, Dante Malphy and Joey Massett finishing 19th. Tyler Graham was 26th in the 600 meter hurdles with a time of 125.45. And lastly, the four by 200 quartet of Antoine Maxwell, Parker Davis, Angel, Quintus, Christian Cars got 15th place in the division by Division One. So that was a little summary of winter sports, but we had awesome, great seasons by all of our athletes and we look forward to seeing what happens this spring. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to student board member comments, Ezraiah.
All right. Hello, thank you. So first thing I want to start off is say thank you to Ms. Hayman. And I know we had, I'm sorry about my voice, but we had a meeting this afternoon and I feel like our club would not do half as the stuff that we do without having an amazing club advisor to kind of lead us in a direction. I know human rights is a student-led club, but we really do have just kind of resilience that's shown to us and that's passed down to us. So I think that's an amazing thing. And when, and to talk about lobby day last Friday, I wanted to say that I think it's amazing that we are advocating for ourselves for more foundation aid. I do think we need to keep on doing so because as we've seen with Science Olympiad, with the musical, we have these amazing programs that need to be funded. And we also have to just kind of recognize that we definitely need more help in certain areas. And I also wanted to say that Gillette Road is doing Annie the Musical this week and I wanted to say good luck to all the kids participating in that. And also there's a half day for pre-K to four this week. And also one next week on Wednesday for all grades. And Once Upon a Matress on, on March 21st, we, we got free tickets. Hopefully we all attend, but it is like near and dear to my heart because my younger sister has a role and I was definitely going to attend anyway. So I think it's going to be amazing if we show up and support our kids. And yeah, definitely reach out to our legislators to keep on seeing this resilience within our district with musicals, with, you know, our sports. We definitely do need the funding to do so, which is why I feel like I show up every single time to keep that going. So that's why I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ezraiah. As always, thank you very much. All right. Moving on to routine action items. Can I have a motion for the consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of February 24th, 2025? Mr. Thorne, second from Amanda. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. I'm going to make a motion to place B and C together. Can I have a second? From Josh, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Moving on to D, Declaration of Marketable and Non-Marketable Surplus. Can I have a motion please? From Josh, from Paul, second from Paul. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, and that is carried. Moving on to discussion action items, starting off with acknowledgement of gifts. We have one gift, an anonymous gift of $5,000 was received by the district from, from the Friends of the North Syracuse Early Education Program from a generous community member who cares deeply about NCEP. Their gift will cover the cost of technology to be used directly in support of three and four-year-old children in the blended preschool setting. Can I have a motion to put that forward? Paul, one from Matt. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We thank you very much to the anonymous donor for the very, very generous gift. And I know that will go towards kids who very, very much need it. Moving on to B, Recommendation to Approve Contract Awards for Cicero North Syracuse High School Phase Three Pool Project. I have a motion, one from Mark, second from Amanda. Questions or comments? Don, did you just want to give a quick blurb on just to clarify what this is again?
This will allow us to build the structure and the only remaining piece will be the actual pool. We'll have a specialty contractor come in and actually install the pool, all the related pool equipment. But this will allow us to get, you know, we have the foundation already built and this will build the structure around that. And so we're very excited after three attempts these bits.
Right. Thank you very much. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. C, Resolution to Increase the FTE of a Special Education Teacher. Can I get a motion for that please? From Paul, one from Dr. Kramer. Questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. D, The Recommendation to Approve the Memorandum of Agreement Between the North Central, North Syracuse Central School District and the North Syracuse Education Association. I have a motion for that. Dr. Kramer, Josh, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. E, Recommendation to Approve the Memorandum of Understanding Between the North Syracuse Central School District and the County of Anadaga. Can I get a motion for that please? Dr. Kramer, Josh, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Acknowledgements of Gifts, NSEF Gifts. The North Syracuse Education Foundation ordered grants to North Syracuse Central School District teachers. In funds or item donations were received by the district as follows. A check for $997.60 was issued by the NSEF for the Feast or Famine, a lens perspective grant mastering the art of food photography ordered by, to teachers Trace Lieberman, Tiffany Serico, Serico, and Danielle Tedisco. The value of the gifts totaled $997.60. This grant is a collaborative effort with the Art, Facts and Business Departments. Can I have a motion? Josh, Mark, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Thank you very much for the gift. Moving on to retirements, we have five to acknowledge. We have Deborah Cavino, an elementary teacher, retires with 26.1 years of service. Kim La Rochelle is a teaching assistant, retires with 27.4 years of service. Cindy Rank was a physical therapist, she retires with 31.1 years of service. Doreen Wilson, a school bus driver, retires with 33.6 years of service. Denise Roche, school secretary one, retires with 20 years of service. Have a motion. Or we don't, we don't need a motion on that. Just kidding. Ha, gotcha. Thank you very much for your service to the district. I mean, that's 20, 40, 60, 80, over 100 years of service to the district combined. What was that? What's the number? 138. Thank you, Matt. That's, that's 13 decades dedicated to our kids and our district. We want to be here without these people, so thank you so much. Moving on to Instructional Personnel Report A. Can I have a motion? Josh, Paul, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Support Staff Personnel Report B. May I have a motion please? Josh, Dr. Kramer, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And I don't believe we're going back into exec. All right. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second? From Mark, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We are adjourned at 7:23 PM. Have a great night.